7:05, Monday, July 13th, 2015. We are in the administration building at 12121 West North Avenue. We will begin, please, with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Dr. Erdl, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Bowden?
Here.
Mrs. Casey?
Here.
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Here.
Mr. Randall?
Mrs. Randall?
Here. Thank you. Excuse me, our next item is public comment on non-agenda items. If anyone here would like to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda. The members of the Wauwatosas School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes, and following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. Recognitions, Mrs. Fee, please.
Thank you. Roosevelt and Underwood Elementary Schools were selected by the Wisconsin Response to Intervention, or RTI, Center, as schools of distinction, and Madison Elementary was selected as a school of merit for their work accomplished through the implementation of Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, or PBIS. The Wisconsin RTI Center is funded by the Wisconsin Department of Public Construction to provide statewide training and technical assistance to help create responsive schools and districts. PBIS is a system-wide proactive framework that enables schools to be more effective and responsive to student social, social-emotional needs by implementing a multi-level system of support for behavior. Roosevelt and Underwood were among 157 schools statewide selected as schools of distinction, and Madison was one of 165 schools statewide recognized as a school of merit.
Thank you. Board members? Congratulations. I know that as a district, we have strongly supported the PBIS program, and it's good to see that we're having these kind of results. Next, we will have the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like removed for separate discussion and action? Okay, seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any community comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Dr. Erdl, please.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes, thank you. We have a report this evening from Wauwatosas STEM, or WSTEM, their annual report. Principal Mr. Mike Coin and members of the STEM community, if you'd like to come forward, please.
I asked for some of the members to come forward, but I'm gonna take it, and they will give me their feedback, as always. Thank you for the opportunity to really present a little bit about where we currently are. I think one of the things, this is my, completed my third year in the position, I think we live it, but I think as we have more communication with others, they might not know a lot of the history behind it, so I'm gonna try to present some of that, as well as look at some of the things that we can do moving forward. Who we currently are, we had one teacher that completed her time at Wauwatosas STEM and was a big leader within that school, but we had six experienced, hard-working, knowledgeable, talented teachers. There are 132 students from 99 families, pretty close to equal, 71 males, 61 females. The ethnicity of the school is 114 white students, seven Asians, seven that are two or more, and four Hispanic, 12 students unfinited and reduced, and we have 19 Governance Board members, 12 that are voting, and seven that are non-voting. So the non-voting members would be myself and the teaching staff. I think one of the things that we looked into this last year was the end of what the School Board has approved as the expansion of Wauwatosas STEM. So we have reached six full staff members, and I think we are one year away from the approved plan of the co-share of the building with Wilson Elementary. My goal, the goal of the Governance Council really has been to start up and grow the program. I think we're always looking for how we can refine, how we can continue to be innovative, and I think, you know, when the initial startup of the school, I know there was federal money for that, that has passed, and as we're looking at, you know, more sustainability, what other things, I think we feel like we're entering into a phase two, which is really, the growth has been reached. How can we refine some of the things that we're doing? How can we continue to really have that STEM focus, you know, in doing some of the things that, you know, I've been reading about, or when we have some of the open houses, people will talk about, well, what do you do with literacy? You know, I know there's been the STEM movement, the STEAM movement, now to the stream, to make sure that you have the R in there. I think there's so many acronyms involved, but I think we're also looking at, you know, the continued look of what we can do within our contract. We know that our contract comes up for renewal at the end of this year, so we need to look at, you know, what that would mean, what other things we can work with, with the district. We've had meetings. Dr. Erdl's been very supportive of letting him know of where we're at, and I think we're interested in, you know, trying to develop a timeline possibly for, you know, Phase Three. Is there ways, even though the original plan, you know, is co-sharing of the building, are there other opportunities for replication and for growth? This year, you know, our Governance Board has put a lot of time into looking at a strategic plan, going through some exercises to look at that, and I think, again, with the results that we've had, the consistent demand from some of the families within the district, and the limited spaces, I think we're interested in having conversations about what a possible Phase Three would be. In the coming two years, Governance Council is really gonna focus on these five areas. This is really what came out of that strategic planning, looking at professional development. You know, we have teachers that are very invested in what they're doing. Our retiring teacher, Mrs. Shanauer, an innovation fund for teaching was established by that, so donations and things like that can go towards professional development for teachers. Our curriculum, what it is, articulating it, but then also looking at, what are some things we really should be doing? The teachers went to a STEM conference and have really come back with a lot of ideas. Their thirst for knowledge, I think, is great. Technology and place-based learning, you know, taking the learning outside the classroom is something we really believe in, as well as communication and community relations, still looking for others, one, to develop more of the program, and also to let it be known that, you know, there is a STEM school. I think in the first couple of years, I reached that a lot in conversations. There's a STEM school in Wauwatosas, so I think we want to continue to build those partnerships and really use this document as a working document to continue to develop all of the crucial conversations and the necessary things that we need to grow our program. The committees that we've really established are the executive, the fundraising, marketing, technology, curriculum and innovations, and grant writing. Those committees, we have people that lead that. We have extremely involved parents that really work with myself and the teachers to really help move things forward within the, within the school. This just outlines some of the accomplishments. Again, as the federal money is no longer there, you know, we've really depended a lot on some of the fundraising. So we've, again, had an outdoor movie night that really is a great kickoff to the school year. All the proceeds to that go to our outdoor classroom, and again, that's something that really combines Wilson and STEM together. Chili cook-off goes to that. We do sell coffee sales, Recycling Day. The Technology Committee, I think that's probably one of the larger things that I've been a part of since I've been in, the principal is really trying to think of a replacement plan for the technology, and so that we can continue to have a one-to-one initiative. Here, again, are, you know, some more things that we have. I think the thing I'd like to highlight here, you know, are really some of those next steps. You know, can we get some of the funding from businesses and partners? I think in our grant writing and things like that, a lot of the times, they've talked about the diversity, or that students even in Wauwatosas aren't as high in need as some of, some other districts in which they provide more funding. Can we try to not have so much of the heavy lifting come from our families? You know, can we look for other people to really partner within the school? And can we redefine those goals of committees and see how they connect with one another, you know, to get the best outcomes? Because I think we really do have some very talented families that are part of our school. We have continued to, again, communicate that plan for expansion. So the 15-16 school year will be the last time that Wilson Elementary has two sections of fifth grade. From that point, the school will pretty much be single section. As the STEM school, we have dealt with that in doing multi-age classrooms and having a team taught. So at each level, kindergarten first, second, third, and fourth, fifth, we literally have two teachers with about 44 students. We've continued partnerships with the zoo, Marquette University College of Engineering. We've continued and evolved really our relationship with Milwaukee County Parks and that outdoor classroom in which they've provided some people that have come into the classroom and done some activities with our teachers so that they can move that forward. Wisconsin Lutheran College, as well as the Medical College of Wisconsin. A new thing that we tried this year was actually taking our students down the Milwaukee Public Museum to learn about butterflies, and then having a follow-up presentation in which we use some distance learning, and which all of the students actually used teleconferencing and had some follow-up questions, and were led through some more activities with people at Milwaukee Public Museum. And again, with this school, it's unique in that, you know, you continue working with your PTSA, but you also have your Governance Board that can help with a lot of the things that we're doing. Just, this slide just outlines a little bit more of what we're doing. One of our teachers, which I was actually down there today, leads one of the engineering, summer engineering programs at Marquette. We had an intern from Wisconsin Lutheran College for the entire year. The Medical College brings in doctors to speak on a variety of topics and works with our four or five classroom on a science fair project. Milwaukee County Parks, as I led already, goes through some things in the outdoor classroom, and there's a little bit more information about the Milwaukee Public Museum experience. Our growth, again, when I started in the school, there were 71 students. We're up to 136 students for next year. That breakdown's kind of there. Last year, we had 132. This year, we had 124 students that applied for WSTEM. There were 22 available seats, you know, just at the kindergarten level, and 11 of them were taken by siblings. Here's the expansion from, you know, kind of from 13-14 on down, as you saw, STEM would grow by one, and then this school year, you know, we will have those sections. So again, Wilson will catch up at the end of this year. The only difference, again, is that Wilson does have a junior kindergarten opening, as of right now, Wauwatosas STEM does not. In the past, it has been brought the question of, you know, where are the applications coming from? So this chart kind of shows that more of the applications are coming from the east-side schools and the west-side schools. The next slide talks a little bit about male/female, you know, in 13-14 and 14-15, and it appeared that that gap was kind of opening as far as more males.
The east side, is that the east high school?
That would be the, yes, the boundary of students, based on the boundary, would be going into east high school and west school.
McKinley is a west-side school in this tabulation?
Correct, that's what I meant. And again, the, looked like the numbers were, the gap was widening between male and female, but the applications for next year tightened that gap again. And I think when we look at the long-range plan, I think that's one of the things that our school takes pride in, is having it pretty balanced, and when we look at, you know, Project Lead the Way classes and things like that at the high school, hopefully a plan, as well as with the STEM at the middle school, that hopefully we're continuing to have more females involved in the, in the STEM programs. This is, again, gave the breakdown of numbers for actual students that are at the school. This chart shows the breakdown of actual applications over the years. And you can see in 15-16, there are a little bit less of applications, but I think that also has some relevance in which people knew that the really only openings were at the kindergarten level. This shows just the siblings that are applying. One of the things in the current contract and with student services is that there is a sibling preference, so I think that that fact does hurt a little bit of our diversity numbers, in which if you have a population that's already not diverse, and you have a sibling preference, you know, that that might hurt your diversity numbers a little bit. Some of the recognitions from our school, we've had the state report card. Over the last three years, I think it's been the number one elementary school. We've housed visits by other schools who want to know a little bit about, you know, what STEM education's about, what it is that we're doing. I think we, in the last year, had about four or five schools that visited. We've had a Lego League, and Wilson and STEM are trying to, again, continue that. This is the first year that we've had two teams compete from first Lego League, and really we've done that within the curriculum, not as a before-after-school part, so the teachers have taken that on. And again, continuing on with trying to hold open houses, you know, for others to learn more about our school. We've done this every year that I've been a part of the school. The Governance Board has worked with me to kind of put out a survey. There are some edits to it, but a lot of the questions that have stayed the same, I wanted to report on. We had about two-thirds of our families responded. 96% feel their children overall have been successful. 77% feel their children have been successful in becoming independent, self-monitoring learner. You know, I think the data from this is impressive, but I think the drive that we have is, you know, how can we still continue to be, to get better? And again, this just shows, again, you know, some more things, and I think one of the really key components that we've had, that might be a little bit more than other schools, and I know in Wauwatosas in general, we have a very active parent community, but it's great to see that 96% of the parents feeling they're encouraged to participate in the school activities. This is just a summary of some of the MAP data, you know. I think our kids are achieving at high levels, but I think MAP data really shows a growth in students. You know, 84% of our entire school exceeded their growth in math, and 73% in reading, and I know that the teachers work extremely hard at that. And, you know, from another level, that's the mean fifth-grade RIT score, you know, for math and reading, and in parentheses is the 11th-grade national mean. So I think that shows, again, that standards are high, and our kids know that, our teachers know that, and they work extremely hard. What's next, you know, on the horizon? A lot of these things I don't think are changing, but I think, you know, we need to continue to look at what it is that we're doing, you know, in reading and literacy. Teachers have talked a lot about, you know, making STEM, making sure that that focus is still there and not losing track, because there are, obviously there's a lot of pressure on, you know, making sure that reading and math continue to be addressed. And the Governance Board, again, you know, has worked extremely hard. We've looked at what that makeup of that board is too, and we've been able to, again, have a member from Marquette University College of Engineering on that, that'll continue into next year, having someone from the Medical College on that, and then we're also adding someone from Milwaukee County Parks. So majority, again, are still parents, but I think we look at that as far as, you know, what other ways can we really try to grow that board and have a diverse approach. But we've really looked at some sustainable plans. How do we, you know, continue to develop committees so that we can keep this wonderful school where it needs to be performing well and people being very happy with it? Recruitment of other families, you know, again, we have very talented and supportive parents, so again, it's just that communication of what are the needs that we really have, and I think the biggest one is, you know, the renewal of contract with the School Board, you know, and what are some possible possibilities of expansion or replication, or is, you know, continuing on with what we currently have. So myself, you know, the teachers that are present here today, members of the Governance Board, I think we, you know, really appreciate the opportunity we have with the district, and we want to continue to grow and do great things, and know that there's a lot of work to be done, but, you know, we feel that we're in a good spot, but there are lots of things we can do to continue to get better.
Thank you very much. Board members, questions or comments on the report? Mr. Bowden, please.
Thank you very much for this presentation, for all the faculty and Board members that are here. Couple of questions. Regarding the application of the people that have an opportunity to participate in your program, do you have any data or reason why the STEM program does not attract the minority, especially the black community? I'm just looking at the numbers. I mean, the school really doesn't reflect the ethnicity of what's going on in the district. I'm just wondering, has that ever been explored, or?
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, a very similar question was raised last year. I think I worked with, you know, our HR department and things like that, as what really we can do. And this year, one of the things that we did was, you know, we did send a letter to make sure that every current JK student in the district got something about the open houses, knew when the enrollment process was. So I think that's something that we'll continue to explore, but I think we also do need to recognize there are some differences in that students that are applying to Wauwatosas STEM do have to be within the school district for one year. We do have a sibling preference, and then we also have now, where we've really reached that expansion, we really are just having that kindergarten group come up. So I think that's definitely something we'll continue to explore. I think we've looked at that and really haven't had an exact, I've had the conversation with Dr. Erdl, like I said, with our HR department, you know, and trying to look at what things can we do, and I think that's something to continue to look at and explore. But exactly why, I really don't have an answer for that right now.
Okay, well, thank you for your, you know, investigation. I urge you to continue along those lines to see if we can open it up. Second question, if I may. On the slide 2014-15, on the top, you mentioned communicated plan for expansion, reduction in the building, et cetera. Do you have an idea what that looks like?
Yeah, as of right now, Wauwatosas STEM has reached expansion. Basically, Wilson has two sections of fifth grade, so after this year, it would go down to one section. So STEM and Wilson, if you would look at it, if we did it as separate grade levels, each would have one section. So there's one kindergarten STEM, one kindergarten Wilson. After this year, it'll be an equal split.
Has there ever been, I guess this would be, Dr. Erdl, has there ever been a discussion to have a building designated as STEM? I mean, I'm just looking at the numbers, 124 applied, 22 were accepted, 11 of those are similarly, have, have, has there ever been a discussion, because there's such an interest? Do you know what I'm?
Yeah, we've had discussions about it, but there's a lot of complicating factors in doing something like that. If you identify a full school as a charter school, you have to provide transportation for those families that choose not to want that. Plus, we have people that really like the education they get at Wilson School and the traditional classroom. I don't like the word "traditional" because it's really not traditional, but they like going to the regular, non-STEM Wilson, and to take that away from, you're taking away neighborhood school, whether you did it at Wilson or you did it anyplace else. So, but there's costs associated, and once you start busing at one school, you bus the whole district and some of those issues.
Has there ever been, I assume there has, but to add this program to other elementaries?
That has been discussed, and a lot of, for me, a lot of it, not a lot, some of it relates to your first question, of do we further segregate our schools by creating more and more sections? I keep saying, and the conversation Mike and I have had, and I think I shared with the Governing Board too, is if we can get an applicant pool that looks like our school district, I could be supportive of doing something. So there's got to be, to do something like that, if there's interest, I think it's important that we don't make an issue even a bigger issue. So trying to look at some of those issues and really try to answer the first question you asked, which we don't have an answer yet, and I think that needs to be explored much further before we create something.
I just encourage, because I looked at the numbers between what Mr. Meyer had said about east and west, or just encourage down the road, maybe to start something like that on the west high school district.
There's been a lot of conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Do I follow up?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you. I'm a little bit out of order, out of sequence here, but I think, you know, just me, the role of the Board, we, the Board, the Board said yes to keep Wilson open. The Board said yes to have the school there, and after that, school administrators and the parents and the kids did everything, and the Board really doesn't do anything, and we shouldn't do anything. I mean, we hear this presentation as we should. So the Board has a directional role, and I think this conversation about how to open a second campus is a Board topic, and just what I think that, you know, we talk amongst ourselves about what to have on the agenda, you know, where can the Board make a positive difference? I would think that the search for a solution to perhaps a second campus would be something for the Board to put some time into. Just my thoughts.
Other Board members? Go ahead, Mrs. Casey.
I think as you guys are entering into your, last year of your contract, I liked hearing that you're looking at maybe bringing in more community members on the Board, because I think that would help alleviate some of the double-dipping of the parents, and I think help with some fundraising issues and community partnerships. But I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the Governance Council, and maybe the difference between the Governance Council and the PTA, and kind of, as you're entering this last year, the contract, have you guys done any strategic planning and like have some goals moving forward for this last year? And then, I don't know, I'd also like to know a little bit about connections that you're making with both middle schools as the kids leave the STEM to go to the STEM house at Whitman and Longfellow. And then lastly, I don't know if they're prepared, but it'd be kind of nice to hear from the teachers. I'd like to know what they feel is, are the contributing factors to their, the students' academic success.
You know, with the difference Governance Board, we basically are provided the equal dollars from the district, you know, as far as what it is that we're provided. Any other funds need to come from a Governance Board vote, you know, so those committees really help with, you know, looking at what other things can we do, how can we continue to do some community outreach? So anything, you know, we have set bylaws, things like that, so that Board really helps make the, any other decisions that wouldn't come directly from the principal, you know, so that Board really helps and drives a lot of the work from the school. So that's a little bit how it's different than possibly the PTSA, which the PTSA supports both schools. This presentation, you know, I think is also a tad awkward, because, you know, I do present just on Wauwatosas STEM, and I don't have that chance to really share some of the things about Wilson, but I really did love to have that opportunity in which the kids presented this school year. I don't know if that's something that's going to continue, but there's a lot of great things happening at Wilson Elementary too, but I know this is the annual report for STEM, so I just want to make sure that I said that, because I didn't want things to spiral out of control with, oh, they're looking at replication, and they're looking at this, because there's some amazing things, you know, that happen within Wilson Elementary as well. We do have, you know, some of the goals, you know, and that was kind of on, I think, what slide that was, on four, that kind of talked about those key areas, and each of those areas really does have some goals that we want to try to attain and have more steps on that. You know, given 10 minutes to talk about a school, you know, is difficult, so we kind of went through that. You know, and I think we, yeah, we continue to look at, you know, some of the diversity of the Board, you know, how can we continue to grow that? And as far as the teachers, if any of them want to come forward, I think that that mic should be on as well.
From my experience, the two biggest things for me are our team teach-
From my experience, the two biggest things for me are our team teaching component.
Would you mind saying who you are? We'd appreciate that.
I'm Debbie Falk, I am the K, part of the K-1 team.
Thank you very much.
So for me, part of it is the team teaching that we do, so there are always two eyes on the kids that, for growth and everything, and I also think the multi-age is huge, because the kids learn so much from each other. Our kindergartners who are first graders this year, they come in and they are like just so independent, and they're ready to take that next role on, which is that leadership role.
Thank you.
I'm Maggie Berrien, the other K-1 teacher at Wauwato system. I think one of the things that stands out most to me is the supportive environment that we have at Wauwato system, between having and working with coworkers who support you, have similar philosophies, are just as and equally invested in the education of the students, whether those students are in their class or those students have moved on to, let's say, the second and third, or the fourth or fifth. We still feel like they're part of our classroom, they're part of our community, I think that's really important. We're also supported greatly by the parents. They will go to the ends of the earth to make sure that our kids are successful, and they'll do anything. And then lastly too, we've got a lot of support from Mike, and I think, like I said before, having lifelong learners, or having coworkers with the similar philosophies of being lifelong learners and being allowed to attend conferences, and really, I think, for myself, and I know Jean Shannon, or she really instilled this in me, that idea that as we're life learners, we're trying to create lifelong learners. So it's not just about, you know, what you're learning in the classroom on that particular day, but that learning is everywhere, it's outside of our four walls in our classroom, and like I said, working with all these people really makes that all happen, and I think is where the success comes from.
Thank you.
So I just had had one more question about the, the middle school and how that transition is going. Are you guys getting feedback from those teachers and principals, and, and how is that going? Because they're, they're just completed their third year also.
Hmm, I think that's definitely room for growth. I think that's something that, that could happen more a little bit. I know that our four or five teachers, you know, have pretty good relationship with at least the Longfellow side, so I think that's, that's a, that's a room for growth, I think definitely, of me having a stronger understanding of what's happening at the, at the middle level, and, and that partnership, so I think that's something that can happen, and I think that's something that, that needs to happen, you know, in looking at, you know, STEM against the charter school, the middle schools are not, but I still think, you know, that continuing and starting to look at students now that are actually getting to that point of entering into the high school as well, of trying to track a little bit, you know, of how those students are doing. So I think there's, there's definitely some, some opportunities, you know, and I think, you know, when you look at the PLC time that's provided from the district, I think we, we appreciate that and have that, that value, and I think it's trying to find if there's other times outside of that in which we can maybe have, you know, some more communication and looking at what the middle school's doing, because I think that, that would continue into our, our goal of really looking at, you know, are we doing some of the things that maybe all STEM schools should be doing, you know, so I think we kind of look at that sometimes and doing the readings, and, you know, you find that balance between, you know, I think what we're doing is working, you know, but are there other things we should really definitely be exploring and continuing to look at, and that would be one.
Well, thank you, everybody. Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Thank you, thank you all for being here. It's very exciting, and I've been following what's been happening all through the years. I do have a question on, I have two questions. One is the summer work with Marquette University College, that's very interesting to me.
Basically, they just, you know, we've, we've done some things with Marquette University College of Engineering, they just reached out to one of our teachers to say, would you be interested in kind of leading some of the classes that we have going on down there? So he's doing some things with robotic classes and things like that for Marquette University.
Huh, interesting. And then I, I, well, I guess I, I maybe have a request. When we're looking at application numbers, it would be interesting for me to know what level the students are applying at, if it's more, I'm assuming it's probably in the lower grade levels, that's my assumption, but I don't want to assume, but that would be something interesting for me to know, once we, you know, try to talk about expanding the programming and what we can do there. And then just one thing I want to draw to everyone's attention, and a lot of times, we talk about funding as just monetary funding, and I do want to point out that from your presentation and what I know of the school, there's a lot of time invested by our professional colleagues in the school, and that is also a monetary investment, although it's not any kind of real money exchanging hands, but that expertise is really critical and should be considered in how we're developing our partnerships. So congratulations, and we'll look forward to hearing more about what you would like to do going forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Cronin?
Thank you. Well, certainly a very good report, and everyone that's associated with the school should be congratulated. It's very high performing, and it's very, very successful. One thing you mentioned that I wasn't aware of, and this sort of gets at the idea of diversity, which something has always concerned me as well with the charter school model, is you said students had to be in TOSA one year before they applied. Would you be more specific about that?
Yeah, that was probably a mis, miscomment. If, if students, the application says if students are living in Wauwato, they can apply for the charter school. If students are open enrolled into the district, they need to attend a Wauwato school for one complete year before they can apply for Wauwato system.
Okay, so students that might be going JK somewhere else could apply for their senior kindergarten?
They could apply, but I think in, in looking at, that could be a difference, again, as we were going through kind of the expansion, that might hurt numbers. So basically, that's one of the reasons we said, let's try to really communicate to all the JK families, so that they know that this is an, an opportunity that exists, but through that communication, you know, we really didn't see a, a change in some of the application numbers.
Okay, and I would like, diversity is an important thing to work on, so I hope that's a continued focus going forward. I know once you get into a set pattern, it's kind of hard to change that when you have so limited number of seats available, but perhaps we can figure out a way around that. Can you tell us a little bit about the budget? I thought we might hear more about that tonight. I was looking at some of the governance board minutes, and the normal fundraising that you do is for 50 to 60,000 per year, or that was the estimate for what you need, is that, can you tell us more about how the yearly budget works?
Sure, from the, from the governance board, you know, we have certain amount that again is given to Wauwato system, and so then looking at some of the other needs and things like that, we try to work with the governance board to kind of develop, you know, kind of a, a plan or a budget for what it is that we think that we need to, you know, continue the same offerings that we have right now. I think that, that number changes depending on, you know, the growth, which your school-based budget always built on the number of students that you had last year, and now that we've had kind of that steady flux, I think that's still kind of a work in progress to see exactly what that number would be moving forward.
And what's, how has it been the last few years? Do you feel the amount of money you need above the building-based budget from the district is consistent and doable, or is there a concern there?
Well, I think it's, it's a number that you have to continually work at. I think, give or take, I think people understand the needs for, and I think that's probably one of the bigger things we need to continue to do is communicate the need, you know, of why, why we're doing the funding, and trying to look at some more, you know, long-range plan of sustainability and things like that. So we've kind of developed, from a technology standpoint, looking at kind of a three-year cycle, and there's been, just been more planning of that, of what things we would possibly need, you know, kind of moving forward.
And I'm just curious, are there members of the governance council here tonight?
There was one before.
Two started.
There are more, no?
All right, thank you, thank you for coming. I would have hoped in the future, I, for me personally, I would, you're doing a fantastic job there, but I would like to hear from the governance council as far as how the school is doing, because it's my impression of how a charter school operates, the reason for having it is the governance council has control, and they're certainly doing an amazing job, otherwise the school wouldn't be as performing as well as it, as it is. So in the future, I would, I would like to see a governance council president or a member at least participate in the presentation to the board, because that's really who our contract is with, even though as a team, you guys appear to be working together fantastically. We've talked a little bit about replication, this is more of a comment than not, not really a question for you, but if we make decisions based on data, it seems like we have pretty strong data in the district that multi-age classrooms are pretty beneficial. I mean, the Montessori school's very successful, STEM school's ultra-successful, and I think that it's time for the, the board and the district to consider moving the multi-age classroom model itself into the elementary schools. And I know that's a huge project and not maybe doable on a large scale at first, but I think it's worth looking at in reading or math, there's some smaller scale programs, taking what you know you do well and what Montessori does well, and trying to figure out how at Lincoln or in Wilson, maybe do that already a little there, and Jefferson, some of the other schools, maybe once or twice a week, we can have multi-age activities or something to try to, to move this into the rest of the student population. It appears to me that outside of having probably great people in both Montessori and Wilson STEM, it's the multi-age classroom what's common between both, and that just seems like a really important thing that I think we should think about as, as one thing to, to take out of your model and move into the rest of the district. I mean, I think that would make our district very unique if we had that as a bigger part of our general education program, and I think it would also make us very, very successful as you are at this STEM school. So thanks, thank you everyone for coming. I'm a bit surprised at how successful you are. I wasn't a big fan of the school to begin with, but you've won me over. You can't argue with how well the students are doing, so congratulations.
Mr. Bodden was waiting, if that's okay.
Just to follow up to what Mrs. Casey's question, do you have an idea how many of these students that leave your STEM program are currently involved at Longfellow or Whitman? I'm assuming, I'm giving you number 22, do they all stay with the STEM program at each of the middle schools?
Yeah, I would say it's a majority, if not all. I don't have the exact number ready for you right now, but I believe majority of them, yes, do, do fill out that paperwork, and that is one of the things, if they are interested, they can continue on, you know, from our STEM program into the middle school, so I think it's, I'm going to say high 90s, but I don't have the exact number.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
I don't see that we can necessarily attribute the success to such a great extent to multi-age classrooms. Certainly there's a correlation, and certainly there are a lot of other good things going on at the school as well. I'm not for or against multi-age classrooms, I just state, I don't agree that we've established a causal relationship.
I will comment on that, just because I know that, there was a presentation to the school board, you know, about the reading initiatives within the school, you know, and, and my work with certain people at the, at the district level, you know, I asked to kind of run similar things for, you know, what we're doing with reading, and I think the, the comment that came back was from a statistically significant number, we don't quite necessarily have as high of numbers to say that what we would be doing, you know, the sample size is relatively small, and even if you'd combine that with what Montessori is compared to the rest of the enrollment of the Wauwato school district.
Yeah, no, to repeat, I'm not for or against, I'm not saying it's not a causal factor, I'm just saying, to be watched, maybe further assessment.
Sure.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Thank you. And I just want to piggyback on that comment that although it is an interesting concept, and certainly is something for the board or administration to further consider, I don't know that it is properly addressed in this particular setting, from the board to the STEM school presentation. However, I would like to learn more about how the transfer happens between the elementary school and the middle school and the high school, and that's probably also something for the board and administration, or just my own personal information, so that I can be more familiar with how that transition is, and are there any limitations there? Again, not for you in your presentation, again, thank you very much for being here.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Hyne, thank you, staff members and governance board members. Yeah, it's hard sometimes to remember that this is an instrumentality charter school, so yes, we have oversight, and we appreciate the annual reports, but some of the discussions, you know, will be for when, when there's a new contract. A lot of this is contractual, so, you know, we would hope when you come back for, to up the contract or whatever it is, it sounds like everybody, including you, are interested in the diversity piece of it, and so I'm glad to hear that you're talking with Dr. Erdl regularly on that. My understanding is a middle school program is a program, not a charter, so, you know, I don't, I think Mrs. Muehlfeld said it, we don't want you leaving here feeling like you need to take responsibility for what's, what's happening there, but it is interesting. It's interesting to know, you know, what, how we're preparing those kids for middle The, I was happy to hear from the teachers, and happy to also say that every single teacher that comes forward from every single school in our district expresses that same support for their families and coworkers, and it's really, really great. So I'm glad that you're one more component that's appreciative of, of their colleagues and their professional opportunities and their families, because that's what we're about, that's what our entire district is about. So I appreciate it. I know this is, takes a lot of work to put this together and to balance an annual report with a new contract application, all of that kind of thing, so thank you for your patience and for your detail.
Ms. Erdl?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hyne, could you either introduce everybody that's here, people, or so the board wouldn't?
Sure, you've met Maggie.
Or you could introduce themselves. You could have them introduce themselves.
I always follow Dr. Erdl's orders. Why don't you introduce yourselves, please?
So, you could just stand up and say your name, if you don't mind.
Maggie Berrien, again, K-1 teacher.
Ms. Berrien, how long have you been there?
I, um, six years, seven, two months, I think that's my, I don't know. It's, it's just been all so wonderful that I just, I just, Debbie Falk, the other part of the K-1, I've been there for three years.
But you've been part of the district.
For a really long time.
Diana Mater, I'm part of the 2-3 team. I taught at Wilson for 24 years, and this is my fourth year in STEM.
I'll talk loud from wearing hats. I'm Abie Waylon, I am going to send this year, so I'll be with Diana, teaching the second and third grade.
Thank you.
I am Taylor Lamachia, and I am the incoming governance board president.
I'm Susan Raym, I'm the outgoing president and incoming vice president.
Thank you all very much for the introductions and for the work and the report. Is there any community comment on this report? Okay, seeing none, is there any community comment on any non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none. May I have a motion to adjourn the regular school board meeting and reconvene into an in-service regarding school board code of ethics and the school board book article study in conference room A, and as a service, in-service, a working session of the board, no public comment will be entertained at this meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Thank you. Dr. Erdl, please.
Mr. Bodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Feath?
Yes.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Raym?
Yes, thank you. We adjourned eight o'clock in conference.